Good evening. It being 7:00 PM on the 13th day of May, 2024, in the town of Grafton, I call this annual town meeting to order. Welcome to Spring Town Meeting. My name is Dawn Anderson. I am your town moderator. I ask that you address me as Madam Moderator. I invite the Chair of the Select Board to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. In the spring of 2023, at the annual town meeting, the Select Board presented a land acknowledgement, which I am honored to share again tonight. We acknowledge that the land the town of Grafton is located on is the traditional and unceded territory of the Hassanama-Misko Nipmuck people who continue to reside on the land today. This acknowledgement is read at the annual town meeting to remember that in 1654, the colonial legislature established the third praying Indian village of Hassanama-Meset, which is known today as Grafton. We denounce the violence of colonialism, which stripped these original stewards of lands that were their ancestral home. We seek to better educate ourselves and honor these lands. We recognize and honor the Nipmuck who were displaced and celebrate those who returned and remain today. Let this acknowledgement serve as a reminder for all people when they are enjoying the land, wildlife, and natural beauty of our Grafton, of our commitment to being good stewards of the land and supporting the rights and interests of indigenous people. My first order of business is to appoint Dave Robbins as my deputy moderator. Where are you, Dave? Oh, there he is. Hi. Now for a few rules of order. No food or drink is allowed in the auditorium during the meeting. The section to my left is reserved for visitors. Visitors associated with boards or committees may sit with those boards or committees if they have cleared it with me before the start of the meeting. Shouting or outbursts will not be tolerated at any time. If you would like to speak on an article, please proceed to the nearest microphone and wait to be called on by the moderator. If you are unable to navigate to the microphone, we have wireless microphones available. Please raise your hand and call for a point of privilege, and the wireless microphone will be brought to you by a member of the Grafton High School National Honor Society. Thank you, Cassie Brown, Christian Riddle, and Riley Coonan, for coming tonight. Please remember to state your full name and address each time that you speak. And a reminder to anyone who wishes to question another, you must direct all questions and comments through the moderator. Tonight, we do have sign language interpreters here. Thank you, Mr. Berger. In consideration of the interpreter, I ask that all presenters who want to come to the podium to please access from stage right. Tonight, we'll be using electronic voting. Did everyone get a remote control when they checked in? It should look like this. We're going to do a quick test. My monitor went out. Okay. That looks great. Please remember to return these remote controls at the end of the meeting. They don't work on anything else, and they are really hard to replace. I'm just going to do a quick audio test in the common area to make sure everyone can hear me. Chief, can you check and make sure that they can hear me out there and give me a thumbs up? Testing, testing, testing. Now we have to wait for him to come back. All good. Great. Now for a few introductions. Town Administrator Evan Bressad. The man behind the machine, Assistant Town Administrator William Blake. I'd like to officially welcome our new town attorney, Chris Brown. Town Clerk Candy LaVallee in the back. And you may have noticed some younger people in the audience today. Please welcome the Grafton Middle School civic students. At the end of this month, the eighth grade will be traveling to Washington, DC. I invited them here tonight so they could have the opportunity to attend town meeting, which is the legislative branch of government for the town of Grafton. I am thrilled to see that so many have accepted my invitation. You should have signed in at the desk when you came in and picked up your bingo card and town meeting guide. Please make sure you bring that back to school so you get credit for coming tonight. And now I'd like to invite our Representative David Meridian and our State Senator Michael Moore to come up and give us an update on what's happening in Boston.
Can we hear we now? Perfect. Good evening, everyone. David Meridian, 8 North Street. I want to provide a very quick update as we did the House budget in April. We came through with a couple of different numbers that I want to throw at you. Chapter 70, which is the vast majority of education aid for the town, thirteen million ninety-six thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And Chapter 90, which is for our roads and bridges, the legislature came through with five hundred and two thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars for the town. UGAR, the unrestricted general government aid, was one million eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. And I'm proud to say in the House budget, we were able to secure some public safety funding for the town as well as increase the funding for the Coming School of Veterinary Medicine, which we all know is so instrumental for Grafton, up to six and a half million dollars. So the Senate has the wonderful opportunity to do their budget next week. I will turn it over to my good friend Senator Moore. But one of the big things I did want to point out was that the governor's original budget was thirty dollars per pupil. The House got it up to a hundred and four dollars per pupil. So it was a huge investment in education. So very proud of that, and my good friend Senator Moore.
Good evening. It's great to see everyone today. So as Representative Meridian stated, the Senate is now going into the budget next week. The only variation in the numbers between the Senate and the House. We matched the House in the Chapter 70. We increased the UGAR, which is the unrestricted general government aid. The House had it at 1.6%. The Senate went to 3%. So we increased that slightly. We matched the 104 for the per pupil minimum aid. So we're consistent there. I also submitted an amendment, which I feel very confident that we probably should get, which your town administrator had submitted some requests for local improvements that you need. So we put in an amendment for about forty-five thousand dollars to help de-weeding of the lakes and ponds in Grafton. I feel confident that we should be getting that by the end of the budget cycle. And for the town, excuse me, and for the Tusk Fretner School, we ended up increasing that to seven million dollars. Other than that, again, we'll be completing the budget to Friday before Memorial Day, and hopefully it will continually be good news. Actually, the only other thing I want to bring up was the Chapter 70 was only increased by the cost of living. And everyone knows the cost of living over the last several years was a lot higher than normally what we have to deal with. In the Chapter 70 funding formula, you're capped to whatever the cost of living is for the year. And where the previous years had exceeded 1.6, which is what the governor had put in. I filed an amendment to try to exclude that this year and to go to the current cost of living, which is a lot higher. So we're trying to also increase that Chapter 70 funding for the cities and towns. Other than that, nice to see you and good luck today and tonight in your town meeting.
Thank you both for coming. Before I have our town clerk read the return of the warrant, I would like a volunteer from the middle school to come up and sit on stage with the town clerk. And now the town clerk will read the return of the warrant.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Grafton, Annual Town Meeting, May 13, 2024, Warrant. To any of the constables of the Town of Grafton and the County of Worcester, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Grafton qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Grafton High School Auditorium located at 24 Providence Road on Monday, the 13th day of May, 2024, at 7:00 PM, and act on the following articles. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up an attested copy thereof in some conspicuous place in each of the precincts of the town at least fourteen days before said meeting. Hear of, fail not, and make due return of this warrant with the doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as aforesaid, given under the hands of this 17th day of April, 2024. Select Board, Town of Grafton. Matthew Offen, Chair. Andrew Jefferson, Vice Chair. Anne Marie Foley, Clerk. Mark Alamo, Raymond Mead. I have complied with the requirements of the above warrant and with the Town of Grafton bylaws by posting an attested copy of the warrant in some conspicuous place in each of the precincts of the town on the above date. Cynthia J. I., Constable of Grafton.
Thank you, Candy. And before I forget, we are also live streaming this to people at home with closed captioning as well. So I want to give a little shout out to Grafton Community Television for putting that together. We have two consent agendas on the warrant tonight. The consent agenda's purpose is to act expeditiously on certain types of articles that generate little to no debate and can be addressed by a single vote. Consent Agenda 1 pertains to articles that will affect the current fiscal year. Having these articles in the annual town meeting warrant eliminates the need for a special town meeting. Consent Agenda 2 pertains to articles that will affect the next fiscal year. These have been added as a consent agenda to ensure time is available for discussion of genuine debate. Once the consent agenda is made, I will read each article under that consent agenda one at a time. If you wish to hold an article and discuss it individually, call out "hold." I will then ask for a motion on the remaining articles. From there, each article that is held will be addressed in order of appearance on the warrant. Consent Agenda 1.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Offen?
I move that the town vote to act upon Article 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, and that they be passed by consent.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any articles that are held will be removed and will vote on the remaining consent agenda. Article 1. Article 2. Article 3. Article 5. Article 6. Can I have a motion for the remaining articles? Yeah, without four. Consent Agenda 1, articles 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 7.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Offen?
I move that the town vote to act upon Article 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 7, and that they be passed by consent.
Motion made?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor of Consent Agenda 1, press 1. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article 4.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Mead?
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate a sum of money from free cash to the following accounts. The Board of Assessors' replacement vehicle account in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The Town Administrator vehicle account in the amount of thirty-nine thousand forty-eight dollars. The police fence account in the amount of fifteen thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. The snow and ice supplies account in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And the IT maintenance account in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for a total transfer and appropriation of three hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-seven.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yep, come on down to the microphone. Just say your name and address.
My name is Kathy DePaolo. I live at 117 McGill. I just wanted clarification on the Town Administrator vehicle account for thirty-nine thousand forty-eight dollars. I believe I read that in the 2022 agenda or warrant, it was a lot less than that. So I was wondering where the thirty-nine thousand came from.
So it was not in the 2022 warrant? This is the first time that it's been caught up. So town administrators, like me, generally have a car allowance in their contract. The board in our renegotiation, because I just entered into my second contract, decided rather than do the allowance, they would use one-time funds to buy a vehicle and use that instead.
Okay. And then is it appropriate to ask how that vehicle is handled from now for the next few years? Is it attached to your contract?
Yes. But if I were to be terminated tomorrow, I guess I would be walking home. I really thought that through, so let's hope that doesn't happen. But that's generally how it works, yeah. So it's a Town of Grafton asset. And I did buy a vehicle that is common with all the other vehicles that we're already using so that should that happen, it would go back into the fleet and just either be for the next town administrator, however that contract works out.
Any other discussion on Article 4? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. I declare the motion carried by the required majority, 181 to 17.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Alamo?
I move that the town vote to act upon Article 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, and that they be passed by consent.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Before I open discussion on Consent Agenda 2, I invite the Chair of the Finance Committee to read the State of the Town message.
Good evening, Gregory Mar, 36 Ferry Street. This evening, the Finance Committee is reporting on the state of the town as we near the end of fiscal year 2024. We are heading into the fifth budget year since the Proposition 2 and 1/2 override was passed in June of 2020. The override, which was proposed before the pandemic and passed early in the pandemic, before we knew what the full effect would be, was expected to last for five fiscal years. Due to diligent efforts by the town and school administrations, we have been able to meet that goal. However, this has not been easy. During the budget process this year, we had to make cuts in the proposed budget to keep within the levy limit imposed by Proposition 2 and 1/2. Two examples of that are funding the police cruiser replacement program from the capital budget instead of the general fund and the school department removing eight hundred and thirty-five thousand and fifty dollars worth of expenses from the general fund and covering these expenses using one-time money from their revolving funds. Both of these items should be returned to the operating budget in FY '26. There are several bargaining units currently negotiating new contracts for FY '25, so there is some uncertainty in the personnel portion of the budget, which comprises the majority of Grafton's expenses. Based on the most recent House budget, we are expecting to have just under two hundred thousand dollars remaining in levy capacity. We also expect new growth to be larger than budgeted. However, given the long-term forecast thus far, our Proposition 2 and 1/2 constraints, the continued decline of state aid as a percentage of our total budget, and the continuing increase in healthcare costs, we will not be able to continue funding all of the town services at current levels in FY '26 and beyond without an operational override. The administration has been working to update our five-year forecasts, but given the uncertainties of the FY '25 budget, that is difficult at this time of the year. We are expecting to have more concrete five-year forecasts this summer once the state and local budgets are finalized, and we will have a better idea of our ongoing fiscal position at that time. The FY '25 budget overall represents a 2.8 million dollar or 3.75% increase compared to FY '24. The school department budget increased by 1.6 million or 3.7%. The cost of health insurance increased again this year at a rate of 4.5%. Our cost for Blackstone Valley Tech, BVT, increased by a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars or 10.6% due to a 7% increase in enrollment in 2023-24 of 104 students compared to the 2022-23 of 97 students and a 3.6% increase in per-student cost for Grafton from fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars to sixteen thousand one hundred and nine dollars. Thus far, we are only projecting a $100 per-student increase in our Chapter 78 for schools, which we just heard at the beginning has now been increased to $104. The current overall state aid estimate for Grafton is just over 16 million dollars, an increase of just over 416,000 dollars from last year or 2.67%, well below inflation and the increasing cost of health insurance. State aid as a percentage of our overall FY '25 revenue is down to 20.68% from over 26% just 10 years ago. Article 16 this evening proposes a capital plan of $2,096,000. This plan is funded by $967,500 from the Capital Stabilization Fund and $1,128,500 from free cash. The remaining balance of the Capital Stabilization Fund will be $91,458.05 if this article passes as proposed. Our certified free cash is $3,654,024. In addition to the capital plan, free cash is being used to fund Articles 2 through 5, which we just passed, for a total of $451,637. These two combined would leave a free cash balance of $2,073,887. Last year, we encouraged our senator and representative to advocate for changes to the state aid formula so that towns such as Grafton get a fair share of the state aid and aren't regularly limited to the bare minimum per-student aid increases. The state formula determines the amount of money that the town is required to put towards operations of the schools based on both property values and the income of our residents. But state law only allows us to collect revenue based on the property value. The formula determines that we don't need significant Chapter 78 increases because of our high resident incomes, despite the fact that we get no revenue from those incomes other than through state aid. This forces us to shift the growing tax burden from those who have larger incomes to those who have higher property values, even though those residents may be retired and thus not have significant incomes to pay those taxes. We have been told that this will not be looked at until at least the FY '26 budget cycle. We have $1,171,041 remaining to be allocated from the $5.5 million that was provided to Grafton via the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. Projects being funded by this money are still ongoing, and the remaining money will be allocated this fall. All money must be obligated by the end of 2024 and expended by the end of 2026. In addition to those housing projects that are currently under construction in town, there are eight large development projects currently underway with varying possible completions ranging from FY '26 to FY '28. Permits have been issued for 59 Pleasant Street, 116 Upton Street, and 5 Millennium Drive. The 8 Pine Street project is awaiting payment of the permit fees by the developer. The 17 and 27 Upton Street project is early in the permitting process and is before the Conservation Commission. The 14 Snow Road project has received state approval. The next step is submission to the town. The 124 Westboro Road project has received approval from Mass EPA, and we are awaiting plan submission. UPS has renewed their interest in developing the property they own on the Shrewsbury border. They are working with both Grafton and Shrewsbury Planning Boards. The currently estimated new revenue growth across all of these projects is over 2.5 million dollars, but it will take multiple years to realize all of that growth, and none of it is guaranteed. The town's combined free cash and stabilization reserves are within the threshold of 5% to 10% of the town's budget that is prescribed in our financial policies and is adequate to support a stable AA+ bond rating. Based on our performance, updated financial policies, and potential revisions to our other post-employment benefits, or OPEB, funding policies, we have a goal of establishing a AAA rating for the town. In FY '24, the average assessed value of a single-family home was $596,235, up from $507,939, and the tax rate was $14.31 per thousand, down $1.40 per thousand from FY '23, resulting in an average single-family tax bill of $8,532, up from $7,980. The Department of Revenue's most recent report, based on FY '22 data, lists Grafton with a combined resident income of $1.24 billion and a per capita income of $62,569. The Finance Committee would like to thank Town Administrator Evan Bressad, Assistant Town Administrator William Blake, Administrative Assistant Amber Diffenderfer, Town Finance Director Mary Loria, the Select Board, Superintendent of Schools Dr. James Cummings, School Department Director of Finance Kathleen Lungarini, the School Committee, and all department heads for their hard work as part of the budget process this year.
Thank you, Mr. Ma. Now I invite Laura Offen to provide an update on the ARPA committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Laura Offton. I am the Chair of the Grafton School Committee and the former Chair of our ARPA committee, which Mr. Mar mentioned briefly in his State of the Town. We wanted to give you a brief update about how these funds were spent and what we did to decide to spend them. So before I begin, I wanted to do a big thank you to the committee. This committee was a true partnership of many different people throughout the town. People came together with good ideas to work together to make sure that the funds were spent across the town in many different, for many different communities and people to make sure we spent the maximum of the money that would reach the maximum of people. So we're very proud. So I'd like to just thank Amory Foley. She was the Vice Chair of the committee. Mary Loria was our clerk. Heather McHugh was our Finance Committee rep. Paul Canoy was our DPW director. Jim Erksine was our community member. Peter Carlson was the former Chair of the Committee and Select Board rep until he retired. And Amber Bressard, our Town Administrator, and Dr. James Cummings, our School Superintendent. So if we could give a big round of applause for those people. We really worked together well, and we think we did the best we could for the town.
Next slide.
Thank you, William. So the project selection process. We had a total of $5.6 million roughly, which was a smaller amount than many other towns received, so we tried to do the best we could with that amount. Before we reached out to the committee, we made the decision to fund the HVAC system at the Grafton Middle School, which was turned into a savings for all of you, so we didn't have to ask for a debt exclusion for the town of Grafton, and now our middle school students and faculty can enjoy regular heat and air conditioning. So that's amazing. We also updated the town website, which reaches the entire community. And then we reached out to all of you via a survey. We had listening sessions, and we collected feedback throughout from town members as well. So then we turned that into a plan, and...
Next slide.
I can see where the majority of the money went. I won't read it through, but there was a wide variety. Again, we hit the school department, public safety, police, recreation. Mental health was a big one that came up. We partnered with Tufts to do a water improvement project. We're going to see some skate park design. We did some economic development, and we also helped the seniors with a new van as well as redoing the parking lot so that it was better usable, as well as funding an accessibility plan for the schools so we could work towards finally making our schools accessible for all. And as Greg mentioned, we have some money left over in case projects run over or anything we need to do. This was a wonderful partnership throughout the town, and I want to thank everyone again, and it's nice to bring some good news to all of you. So good night and enjoy town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Offton. Again, any articles held will be removed, and we will vote on the remaining as a consent agenda. Article Eight. Article Nine. Article Ten. Article Eleven. Article Twelve. Article Thirteen. Article Fourteen. Is there any discussion on Consent Agenda Two? Hearing none. This requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried by the required two-thirds vote, 181 yes, eight no. Article Fifteen.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Jefferson.
If you'll permit me, before reading the article, I'd like to embarrass my eighth grader. Hi, boss. How you doing, bud? I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $75,776,967 as recommended by the Town Administrator and the Finance Committee, and has detailed in Appendix A of the annual town meeting warrant for the purpose of funding the operation of several town departments in the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Before I open this for discussion, I invite Town Administrator Evan Bressad to make a brief presentation.
Thank you. Amber, I've been texting you for like 10 minutes. We're gonna skip back a little bit from what Greg already just went over, so if you could go like five slides in. Yeah, keep going. Greg already went over all this. Stop. Wait, wait, go back. Sorry, never mind. We're gonna go from here. Five was an exaggeration, I guess. So the town of Grafton continues to have really good new growth every year, so new growth is what we can gain through taxable income. And generally, every year, we set it at a fixed number so that we know that we are going to be higher than that number so that we don't come in under budget. So if you look back, fiscal '23, we're at 881. '24, we're at about 923. So for fiscal '25, we've set that at about $800,000, although we believe that it'll be probably 900-plus again, but we want to be conservative when we do those numbers. All right, Amber. Thank you. Revenue by category, you can see that our personal property tax continues to be about $1.6 million. This is consistent with what we had for the number last year. We also have our real estate tax, which this year is up to $54,683,000. And our Chapter Seventy-Aid is different than the numbers that you just heard from Greg or for Representative Meridian or Senator Moore, and that is because, generally speaking, what we do is we take the worst-case scenario number. So that is the governor's number in this case, and we use that for our initial budget, again because we want to be as conservative as possible and as far away from that levy limit line as possible. So we're gonna leave that where it is, and then we can always make adjustments in the fall if we needed to. Amber, next slide for the other stuff. This is just another breakdown. You can get all this information on our website at ClearGov or on the presentation that we posted. The largest one out of this group is motor vehicle excise, which is just shy of $3 million. And then the last one that people often have questions on is the last line there, which was departmental transfers. That's the sewer. Sewer fund is an enterprise fund, so we're transferring indirect costs over from the sewer fund into the municipal budget. Thanks, Amber. So our total revenue this year, $77,521, and our total expenses, $77,576. Again, revenue, if you went on to ClearGov today, would be a little bit different because the proposed numbers coming out of the Senate and the House are better than what we were working with when we created the budget. So overall, you can see our total operating budget this year grew by 3.74%. And general government was at 5.95. Public schools, 3.7. BVT comes out to about 16 when you add all the things together there. Public works, .9. Health and Human Services, which is your Board of Health, 6.58%. Culture and Recreation, 4.92. And our debt service actually decreased as we pay down the debts that we have on the books. One thing to note is that in the general government line, that's where your health insurance lies and your pension lies, so it generally does carry a little bit of an outsized percentage change. Next slide, Amber. Thank you. So I added this slide this year because I think this is important of how we break up the money that we get every year. So for Prop Two and a Half, we started with 1.265 million, and our new growth number, as I said before, was at 800,000. Levy capacity that the town of Grafton had at the beginning of this budget process was $408,000, and so what we did was move that entirely into the school side of the budget. And then we used of that 1.265, we moved over 60% of that money, since the school department is roughly 60% of the budget. That gives you a rough split of the schools, starting their budget at a growth of $1.647 million and the town at 826. However, when you get to the actual split, the schools is 1.6 million, and the town is just shy of 1.2 million. I'll talk about why that is. Next slide, Amber. So on the municipal side of the budget, you'll see that our insurance goes up by, you know, this time it was 2.19%. Retirement and pension grew by 9.94%. Medicaid, Medicare is 5.6. Health insurance, we carried a 5%. Sanitation up by 2.5% BVT. So when you put all those together, we actually start... Amber, next slide. We start the budget process $70,000 in the hole, and that's where we then have to work our way back from it. So what we do is we take those numbers, we work our way back, but we also go and adjust other things. We can change some of the revenue projections that we have... Amber, can you go back to the slide there? Thanks. We can play around with the bank interest a little bit to make the things, and we can do very unpopular things like bag fee changes and all of that, which is all the Select Board's domain. I keep telling them not to raise fees, and they just keep doing it. I don't know why. I'm just kidding. Okay. So changes to expenses. Obviously, retirement is something that we really don't have very much control over. It's whatever Worcester County retirement sets it at. Town insurance, 5% increase in health insurance is actually a very good increase. We were originally, if we had stayed in the health insurance program that we're in, our increase this year would be over 10%. So that's a tremendous savings that we got there. BVT, as we talked about, a cost-of-living adjustment of 2% across the board, and our energy lines are remaining stable after a pretty tumultuous year in fiscal '23. Human resources, we've consolidated a department. We moved human resources over into the Assistant Town Administrator position, and we created a Director of Payroll and Benefits. IT, we've consolidated a whole bunch of the expenses that were all over the budget, and we've captured those budgets and expenses more accurately. That's actually a lot of, that's like three years' worth of work. So for those of you who don't know, we revamped after I got here and Mary Loria, Finance Director, got here, we revamped the entire financial system of the town to try to more accurately capture all of these things. Conservation Commission, we haven't been able to fill the field inspector role, so we consolidated that into an Assistant Conservation Agent position. Public safety, as we discussed, the Capitol now holds the cruisers and the Inspector of Buildings Department, so that's the Building Department. We added a part-time employee. It was driven by staff retirement, so Tom Frederico had retired. He now does some part-time work for us, so that's where that is captured. All right, engineering. We had increased it due to MS4. We actually were able to move some of that money. MS4 is the federal stormwater regulation. Highway, we've made some adjustments for training and paving. Health Department, we're part of Worcester Health, and so there was a planned increase there. And the library budget, we have a new union in place, and we have a new director that comes on board June 3rd. All right, so what are we doing to try to mitigate these costs? We do a lot of different things, but one thing that we're particularly proud of is we're very good at getting grants. So in fiscal '23, we netted about $2.8 million in grants for the town of Grafton. This year, we're at about $700,000, but I would anticipate that by the end of fiscal '24, that'll look more like 1.1 to 1.2 million, once we've reconciled all the grant accounts. We also look for earmarks from Senator Moore and Representative Meridian, and this budget carries a staff reduction on the town side of two, we've reduced two part-time employees. And that is it. Thank you.
Candy LaValle will be reading the line items from Appendix A. Any categories that are held will be removed, and we'll vote on the remaining budget. Candy?
General Government, $14,215,928. Public Safety, $4,698,844. Public Works, $3,628,222. Health and Human Services, $673,534. Culture and Recreation, $1,547,631. Debt Services, $5,978,184. Interfund Transfer, $0. Total Expenditures, $75,776,967.
Thanks, Candy. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
Madam Moderator, Brooke Padgett, 23 North Street. I apologize, I should have put a hold on general government. Actually, I could have put a hold on all the items, but I'm gonna stick just to general government. I didn't want to keep us here forever.
What is your question?
Well, I know we're trying to get through town meeting by doing these consent agendas and making everything more efficient, but the purpose of the warrant is to tell people what we are coming to town meeting for, and under general government, we're, as a total budget, at $75 million. If I read it correctly, unclassified is $10.5 million, yet in each one of these articles, all it has for reasons is personnel and expenses. There's no other detail. So it's personnel or expenses. We don't know if you hired 30 personnel, one personnel, one person's getting $2 million, you're getting 30 people for $2,000. So, because I'm on general government, I'm interested in the $10.5 million for unclassified. I'd like some explanation, at least what the town meeting is gonna vote for for the $10.5, since all it says is unclassified.
Evan, can you speak to the total unclassified in the budget?
So unclassified is your health insurance, your pension, MIA insurance, all of those things that don't fit neatly into another category. So GFOA, which is the accounting practices we follow, best practice is that that's categorized as unclassified.
Thank you. All right, thank you. I guess this is just a comment, then. It's very difficult to see these articles, but also, as I said, to come to town meeting, we see the warrant. I think in the effort to get too efficient, we are not giving the people enough information on what are in these articles. I know in the old... I know in the old days, I don't want to sound like an old man, they used to sit up there and read every budget item, so you'd know how much money was going to personnel, paperclips, whatever it happened to be. Now it's just personnel expenses. I think it's hard for people to sit here and know what they're voting on when you're not given that kind of detail. And maybe it's available on some website somewhere. But I think it's helpful when it's in the warrant, so we can sit here and see actually what we're voting on. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on Article 15? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried, 175 to 28. Article 16.
Madam Moderator?
Ms. Foley?
I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer $1,128,500 of certified free cash and appropriate and transfer $967,500 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for a total appropriation of $2,096,000 for funding of capital projects and purchases during the fiscal period from July 1st, 2024 to July, sorry, June 30th, 2025, as outlined in Appendix B of the May 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? You can come on down to the mic. Just state your name and address.
My name is Marista Premraj, 121 Miguel. I had a question, line item, kitchen grease trap replacement marked for $16,000. It is my understanding the school department has a revolving account where these expenses are usually tagged. I'm curious to find out why they change.
I don't have the answer for that. Jay, is there a revolving account that we use for grease traps or? No. So it doesn't appear that we have a revolving account for grease traps. So the school department submitted it to the Capital Improvement Committee in my office for that to be done.
Okay, so there isn't something called the lunch account?
The lunch account?
Yeah.
I'm sure there is a lunch account, but I don't think that it deals with grease trap cleaning, is I think how it plays out.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article 16? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried, 188 to 15. Article 17.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Alamo?
I move that the town vote to appropriate funds in the amount of $3,676,85 for the operation of the Grafton Sewer Department Enterprise Funds during the fiscal period from July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025, as outlined in Appendix C of the May 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion is carried, 186 to 9. Article 18.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Mead?
I move that the town vote to appropriate $404,500 to fund the Grafton Community Television Budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, as recommended by the Cable Oversight Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on Article 18? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried, 178 to 22. Article 19.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Ofton?
I move that the town vote to appropriate funds in the amount of $1,715,896 to pay the town's apportioned share of the net operating cost in capital assessment of the Blackstone Valley Regional School District.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried, 184 to 17. Article 20.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Jefferson?
I move that the town will vote to approve the $10 million borrowing authorized by the Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional School District, herein known as the District School Committee, on February 15th, 2024, and amended by its actions of March 14th, 2024, for the purpose of paying costs of roof reconstruction and the replacement to energy-efficient rooftop HVAC units at the Blackstone Valley Regional Vocational Technical High School, located at 65 Pleasant Street, Upton, Massachusetts. Including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, herein known as the project, which proposed repairs project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, herein known as MSBA. Said amount to be expended at the direction of the Blackstone Valley Vocational School Committee, excuse me, Regional Vocational School Committee, with the understanding that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need and is determined by the MSBA. And if the MSBA's Board of Directors votes to invite the district to collaborate with the MSBA on this proposed repair project, any project costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. And provided that the town's approval of the borrowing shall be contingent upon the district's ability to secure grant approval from the MSBA and that the amount of borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. All of those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried, 168 to 30. Article 21.
Madam Moderator?
Ms. Foley?
I move that the town vote to appropriate $2,500,000 to finance the purchase of a new fire truck for the Grafton Friar Department, with said appropriation to be met by borrowing contingent upon passage of a Proposition 2 and 1/2 ballot question under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c).
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. This article requires a 2/3 majority vote. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carries by the required 2/3 majority, 175 to 27. We're getting a new fire truck. Article 22.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Alamo?
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of GLC 44, 54(b), to allow town trust funds to be invested in accordance with GLC 203(c), the so-called prudent investment rule.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried, 167 to 16. Article 23.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Mead?
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of money in the amount of $150,000 from sewer retained earnings account to the major equipment account.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried, 187 to 5. Article 24.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Ofton?
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $150,000 from the sewer retained earnings account to the O and M emergency account.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carries, 188 to 8. Article 25.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Jefferson?
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $150,000 from the sewer retained earnings account to the plant upgrade expansion account.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carries, 186 to 10. Article 26.
Madam Moderator?
Ms. Foley?
I move that the town vote to appropriate funds in the amount of $24,000 from the fiscal year 2025 estimated revenues for community preservation administrative expenses and reserve from the fiscal year 2025 estimated revenues, $78,409, to each of the following reserve accounts: Historic Resources Reserve, Affordable Housing Reserve, and Open Space Reserve, all to be held for future appropriations, and further to reserve $464,846 to the budgeted reserve for future appropriations.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion is carried, 189 to 8. Article 27.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Alamo?
I move that the town vote to appropriate funds in the amount of $60,000 from the fiscal year 2025 Community Preservation Estimated Revenues for the purpose of making the 16th and 20th interest principal payments on the Pell Farm Property Bond.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried, 186 to 8. Article 28.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Mead?
I move that the town vote to appropriate funds in the amount of $75,000 from the Community Preservation Historic Reserve for the purpose of making the 10th of 20 interest and principal payments on the Grafton Townhouse Restoration Bond.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried, 185 to 7. Article 29.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Ofton?
I move that the town vote to appropriate funds in the amount of $20,000 from the fiscal year 2025 Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve for the purpose of replenishing the Grafton Housing Authority's Jim Gallagher Rental Assistance Program for GHA residents and applicants, with such funds to be expended by June 30, 2026, unless the CPC by a 2/3 majority vote extends the deadline.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Colleen Roy is going to make a brief statement in support of the- in support of this article.
Now? Okay. Colleen Roy, 53 Elmwood Street. The Housing Authority rep was unable to be here tonight and asked that I briefly speak to this article. This is a continuation of the rental assistance program that we voted on last year. And this year, it's officially named after Jim Gallagher, who was a big proponent for both the Housing Authority and CPC, and just think, all-around great guy and great program. So I hope you vote yes.
Thank you, Colleen. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried 190 to nine. Article 30.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Jefferson.
I move that the town vote to appropriate funds in the amount of $194,000 from the fiscal year 2025 Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve for the restoration and preservation of the Cisco Homestead, subject to a preservation restriction to be held by the Town of Grafton, with such funds set to be expended by June 30, 2026, unless the CPC by a two-thirds majority vote extends the deadline.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Madam Moderator, Scott Rossiter, 2 Stonewall Drive. If you'll indulge me, I'd like to speak about the next three items, just sort of in broad terms. I'll be very brief.
Okay.
Thank you. First of all, I'm a strong supporter of the Community Preservation Act, and I appreciate the hard work that the volunteers on the Community Preservation Committee put into bringing these articles before us. Their job is to vet the projects and make sure that they meet the requirements of the Community Preservation Act and that we have the money available to fund them. Then they bring them items forward to us at the town meeting, but they're not recommending those items. They're just saying that they meet the provisions of the act, and we have the money. It's up to us to decide if we want to spend our tax dollars. The next three articles are asking us to invest in privately-owned buildings. The projects together total almost $400,000 and have no direct benefit or guarantees to the taxpayers. In fact, the properties could be sold after the projects are done. You might consider that drastic, but if you look back, we had a Baptist church in North Grafton that was sold to a private party. Eventually, it was demolished. It's no longer there. A Unitarian church in Upton was sold to a private party, converted to a home and an art gallery. And then even closer to home and more recent, we had a very historic legacy building in South Grafton, the Polish Hall, a wonderful place, sold to a private developer. It's a parking lot. One, just sort of last example. If the owners of the Grafton Inn, for instance, decided to restore the beautiful graceful porch that used to be on the front, would we give them money to do that for their private enterprise? You're here tonight because you care about the tax dollars. This is not free money. This is your tax dollars. Think hard about how you want them spent, and please don't just rubber stamp the next three articles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bill Hadley, Breakup Hill Road. Is Dr. Gould here?
I'm sorry. What was the question?
Well, I have a bunch of questions that I'd like to ask her. Thank you for coming, by the way, okay, to our meeting tonight. Can you tell us what you plan to do with this money? And is this going to finish up the rebuild?
Can you guys make sure you speak directly into the microphone? The interpreters can't hear.
Sure. Hi. Thank you for your question. So my name is Dr. Ray Gould. My address is 8 Tea Bottle Hill Road, Leverett, Massachusetts, and I'm here representing the Hassan-Misko Nipmuck. So thank you for having us. This is the final phase of restoration. It's for the interior restoration. And the building will then be open to the public as a museum.
Okay. Is there power in the building? Oh, wait a minute. I have to go through you. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Is there power in the building? Is there power in the building?
Is there power in the building?
Yeah.
Should I introduce myself again? Okay. Not at this time, not permanent power.
How about water?
Not at this time, not permanent water.
How about a septic system?
There is a septic system in place from previously that would be reassessed.
Is it a septic tank and a leach field? Or is it just a hole in the ground?
I don't know, unfortunately.
All right. What about heat?
There is no heating system presently. It's part of the plans.
Wow. So who owns the property?
The property has no deed. It is held in trust by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and managed by the Hassan-Misko Nipmuck.
And the building, same? Okay. Does anyone, does anybody live on the property?
No.
Okay. All right. Now I need some money figures, okay? You originally asked for $137,000?
Yes, $137,000 is a match for the Mass Cultural Council Cultural Facilities Fund grant that we've received. So that requires a one-to-one match. So there was a request for 137. We have $11,000 in kind. And then it's always strongly suggested on a project like this that you have a 20% contingency. So that adds to 57,000, added to the 137.
So that's why it's 194,000 now? Okay. How much, can you tell us how much has gone into the building?
I don't have those figures off the top of my head, unfortunately.
Can I tell you?
Sure.
All right. So far, Grafton has given $162,000 to the building. Now they want another 194, plus the match of Mass Council, which will bring it up to $537,000. Is that correct?
I don't have all of the figures at the top of my head. We also had, which you might not have, we have some other private funding previously, dating back to 2006, where we had a historic structures report done that was from a private foundation grant. So unfortunately, it didn't come with all of the figures that have helped to support the restoration of this historic structure that's on the National Register of Historic Places. But thank you for compiling those.
So do we want to, do we want to do this? I mean, $537,000 for the building? I mean, that's a lot of money. We could build a new house for that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Good evening. I'm John Stevens. I'm the chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. All three of these projects will benefit the town in very different ways. The Nipmucks have been a great partner with us. They have received grants. It's the third grant from us. They've also received other grants from other funding sources. The benefit is that this is the history of our town. These were the first people who lived here. This land was, is the only land in the Commonwealth that has never been owned by Europeans. This is not locally significant. This is not statewide significant. It's not regionally significant. It's nationally significant. This is very important in the early history of our community and in the Commonwealth. The two following articles, and by the way, we spent at least this much on the parking lot behind the minutes of building. So I know we need a parking lot, but I think this has a great deal of value that will benefit schoolchildren. That this will be another opportunity for them to learn about their town and the history of this nation as it developed. The other two projects, which I don't know if I should wait for those.
Just keep it contained to this article. Is there any more discussion on this motion? Mr. Yeomans.
Bill Yeomans, 297 Providence Road. Thank you, Madam Moderator. John Stevens, who just got up and mentioned kids going there. Is this after this expenditure? Will it be handicapped accessible for a child in grammar school being able to be inside this building? Thank you.
Ray Gould, again. Thank you for that question. Yes, the architectural plans do include ADA accessibility from the backside, from what is the newest part of the building attached to the historic part of first constructed in 1801. And the back part where we're doing the ADA accessibility was added in around 1960.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried 153 to 47. Article 31.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Foley.
I move that the town vote to appropriate funds in the amount of $120,000 from the fiscal year 2025 Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve for exterior restoration and preservation of the Congregational Church of Grafton, with such funds to be expended by June 30, 2026, unless the CPC by a two-thirds majority vote extends the deadline.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
So thank you, Ms. Moderator. Robert Lane, 35 North Street. I'm the moderator for the Grafton Congregational Church, member of the cabinet, and here to speak on behalf of the church for this article. If you could go to the next slide. Just a quick reminder of who we are, and perhaps to address a couple of the thoughts that my good friend up the street, Mr. Rossiter, had about the longevity of the church and the sustainability of the organization. We're just about seven years shy of 300 years. We think we have a pretty good track record here. The building itself is about nine years shy of 200 years old, one of the oldest properties on the common. And, you know, we've been around for quite a long time. The church itself does support the community in many ways, beyond the faith group that we have. We charter a number of organizations in town. A lot of the scouting organizations are chartered through our church. We provide meeting space to a very large number of organizations, charitable organizations. There's almost no day throughout the year that doesn't have somebody using one of our conference rooms or fellowship hall. And, you know, that's scouting organizations, 12-step groups and others. And we do a tremendous amount of community work through missions, helping the food bank, Worcester Fellowship area missions, and other good works of the church.
Andy Duchesne, 13 Meadowbrook Road. This project has been divided up into sort of three components. There's the historic piece of the church. There's the newer part of the church in the back. And then there's the stone patio, if you will, out front. So those are three different parts. The newer part of the building in the rear, we consider that work maintenance. And so we've fundraised to do that work ourselves. And we'll hit that piece right after this. The stonework on the front is pretty unsafe right now. The plan is to remove those stones, redo the base that they're sitting on, and put them back into place. And then the last part is the historic part of the church. There's some custom, you know, original, one-of-a-kind millwork carpentry that needs to be replaced. There's also the existing siding that is old hardwood siding that we want to preserve. So we have to go through a more strict process of stripping that down so we can keep the wood, rather than just ripping it all out and replacing it with something newer. So that's sort of the three components of this project. Next. Just some quick shots. Good. The stones out front. Thanks.
So in terms of the budget for this, the total project costs we've provided for $175,000. That includes approximately a 10% contingency on top of this. To date, we've received line of sight into funding of approximately $45,000, with the goal of getting to $55,000 outside of any support from town meeting, with a request for $120,000 to cover the bulk of the preservation portion of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried 164 to 35. Article 32.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Alamo.
I move that the town vote to appropriate funds in the amount of $65,000 from the fiscal year 2025 Community Preservation Historic Reserve to restore the front columns on the Baptist Church of Grafton, with such funds to be expended by June 30, 2026, unless the CPC by a two-thirds majority vote extends the deadline.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Before I open this for discussion, David Libby will be making a few remarks.
As noted, I'm sorry, David Libby, 44 George Hill Road, and a member of the Baptist Church. This article asks town meeting to provide up to $65,000 of Community Preservation Act funding for this repair project on the front columns at the church. As you can see, the church columns are an important and distinctive part of the exterior of the building. It's visible from the common. It's part of the Grafton Common Historic District. Building was constructed about 1830, nearly 200 years ago. And over the many decades since then, these columns have held up very well, withstanding the effects of weather of all sorts, until recently. So at this point, water damage is destroying the moldings at the base of the columns and thereby threatening the integrity of the columns. As you can see here, there is not much left of that set of ring moldings that encircle the column. That's the word. the column. That's the worst of the four. And that damage appeared perhaps a year and a half, two years ago, and has rapidly accelerated to what you see here. The moldings that we're talking about are approximately three feet in diameter and consist of four distinct, I would call them layers or contours. So replacing these moldings is a requires some special expertise. Round column jackets that you saw in the first slide sit on top of the moldings, and they must be supported during the repairs. So the process involves many steps, including duplicating the moldings, the most expensive part of the work, we hope, I'll get to that later, supporting and jacking the column jackets, and removing and replacing the old moldings with new. It's expensive, $11,000 to $12,000 per column, best case. We talked with four contractors. All of them submitted proposals. We had lengthy discussions with three. We've picked one that has the most experience in New England doing this kind of work. They've worked on many historic buildings throughout this part of the country. And it is ready to begin work once we complete action at this meeting. The initial estimated cost to repair the four columns is about $50,000 if no surprises are encountered during the project. We have been advised to expect surprises. So we are allowing for a $20,000 contingency margin on top of that. We're talking about jacking up parts of a 200-year-old building. So sooner or later, something will be, something interesting will occur. This brings, if needed, this contingency is needed, it brings the total cost to $70,000. This will be covered by an initial $5,000 from the church and hopefully $65,000 of CPA funding. Let me speak just for a second to the role that the church plays in the community. We have, over the years, hosted numerous scout troops. We currently have Girl Scouts, excuse me, Girl Scouts using the church. We host AA groups. We currently have one on meets on Tuesday evenings, which unfortunately continues to grow almost every week. We have local groups using the church, both for book group discussions, craft groups, and so forth. And the church makes significant donations every year to missions, both local, state, regional, and throughout the world. So my point about this is, the church is not here just for the people that sit in it on Sunday morning. The church is here for the community and beyond. The Grafton Common Historic District Commission, the Grafton Historical Commission, and the Grafton Historical Society, try saying "that" three times quickly, all support our application for CPA funds. The CPC voted unanimously to approve funding for this project. Finance Committee has recommended passage. We ask for your support tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried 162 to 34. Article 33.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Mead.
I move that the town vote to transfer a sum of money in the amount of $152,109 from the CPA Affordable Housing Reserve account to the Grafton Affordable Housing Trust, with such funds to be used in accordance with the CPA guidelines for community housing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion as carried 156 to 24. Article 34.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Ofton.
I move that the town vote to extend the Sunset provisions of its previous grant for the purpose of restoring the historic Grafton Common in the amount of $651,723, with such funds to be expended by June 30, 2026, unless the CPC by a two-thirds majority vote extends the deadline.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried 177 to 12. Article 35.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Jefferson.
I move the town vote to alter the layout of Fallett Street for the reconstruction of the Depot Street Sutton Bridge over the Blackstone River.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carried 181 to 2. Article 36.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Foley.
I move that the town vote to amend Section 10 Fisherville Mill Smart Growth Overlay District, subsections 10.2, definitions 10.5(c), requirements 10.5(f), administering agency, and 10.13, design standards of the Grafton Zoning Bylaw as written in the Article 36 of the May 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, and further to authorize nonsubstantive changes to the lettering, numbering, and pagination of the zoning bylaw to be consistent with said bylaw.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. This requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, press one. All those Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried by the required two-thirds majority, 163 to 15. Article 37.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Alamo.
I move that the town vote to amend Section 1.3.3.4, Site Plan Review of the Grafton Zoning Bylaw as written in Article 37 of the May 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, and further to authorize nonsubstantive changes to the lettering, numbering, and pagination of the zoning bylaw to be consistent with said bylaw.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Yeomans.
Bill Yeomans, 297 Providence Road. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just have a question on the, on the scratch-out where it says, "One of whom may be the associate member" when sitting in review of the application. Why is that being changed?
Madam Moderator, I believe that it's only being changed because the Attorney General of Massachusetts changed the law that limits the role of the associate member of the Planning Board. And so this is just to make it incongruence with what the Attorney General requires.
Mr. Robbins.
Oh, Dave, I did so well, though.
David Robbins, 92 George Hill Road. Just one minor point of clarification on the explanation. The Attorney General did not change the law. The Attorney General, generally speaking, does not have the ability to change Massachusetts general laws. What did change was the Attorney General's interpretation of Massachusetts general laws. The Attorney General has, in recent years, been disapproving zoning bylaws that allow the associate to act in the manner that we had written into the bylaw. So we are revising to be consistent with the current Attorney General's current interpretation of state law.
I think that's what I said, Dave.
Mr. Yeomans.
Thank you for that clarification. The question I have in my mind is, I now serve on the ZBA. We have an alternate member of the ZBA, and it's a very important position. The ZBA has seven members, five are voting members, and men and women who serve are very busy. And oftentimes, the alternate members are appointed to hear a particular case. And this is similar to what is being done now on the ZBA. And I, while it may be an interpretation, for that reason alone, I am going to vote against this particular article, because I think that an associate member who is willing to serve on the planning board should, from time to time, if there is a need, and if that person has attended all the meetings, and associate members, like alternate members on the ZBA, can participate, they are full participatory in all meetings. So I don't think it's necessary to omit that opportunity for your associate member on the planning board to not have the opportunity to vote, if the chair so decides.
Bob Hessinger, 48 George Hill Road, Chairman of the Planning Board at the moment. We have to do what the law says. Your law is different than our law. We have to deal with the law about special permits and the law about site plan review. The rules are different for the two of them. This is aligning the rules for site plan review. The associate still has the same situation that you're talking about in the case of the special permits, because they need a supermajority. You have to have four yes votes, no matter what, on them. If anybody has any questions.
Just one more comment about that. I can tell you that planning boards across the Commonwealth would like to be able, would like their associates to be able to fully participate. There is some movement in the legislature, I'm not holding my breath, but there is some movement to amend state law to facilitate that. Right now, it's, as I said, as Bob said, it's very strict about what the associate on the planning board is permitted to participate in. We are, some of us, at least across the state on planning boards, like I said, are hoping to make it possible to do what Bill suggested.
Dave, can you get a little bit closer to the microphone?
Sorry about that. Yes. I'll try to briefly repeat myself. Planning boards across the Commonwealth are, would love for their associates to be able to fully participate in the manner that Mr. Yeomans suggested for the ZBA. It's currently not legal under Massachusetts general laws. There is some movement in the legislature to make that legal. It hasn't happened yet.
Roger Trahan, 4 Old Upton Road. Through you, Madam Moderator, would you have, or would town council weigh in on this?
You're not speaking directly into the mic.
Okay. Roger Trahan, 4 Old Upton Road. Through you, Madam Moderator, could town council weigh in on this, rather than, I appreciate the back and forth, but I think the more definitive legal opinion would be in order. Thank you.
Our town council, Chris Brown.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Yes, so, as they've correctly pointed out, the current law is that planning board members are restricted from participating in site plan review. They can participate in special permits. There is legislation that's pending in the current session, HB 3555, I believe, that's still pending, that would remove that restriction, but it has not been enacted yet. So the law right now, as it stands, is returning to change the bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. This does Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried by the required two-thirds majority, 144 to 28. Article 38.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Mead.
I move that the town vote to amend Section 12 Village and Neighborhood Mixed Use Districts, VMU, of the Grafton Zoning Bylaw as written in Article 38 of the May 2024 Annual Town Meeting, and further to authorize the nonsubstantive changes to the lettering, numbering, and pagination of the zoning bylaw to be consistent with said bylaw.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Madam Moderator.
Where did that come from?
Craig Duffney.
Oh, yes. Mr. Duffney.
Thank you. Craig Duffney, 5 Bruce Street. Through you, Madam Moderator, to somebody from the planning board. Is it not possible during the public hearing process for the planning board to currently grant waivers for an applicant in this village mixed-use
Mr. Hessinger.
Bob Hessinger.
Get right up in there.
Bob Hessinger. Madam Moderator.
Bob Hessinger, Madam Moderator. Yes. We can grant waivers on certain things, but we can't grant waivers on zoning. The zoning currently says, basically, nonprofit. These folks want to be able to do a profit. No. No, which... I thought that was the one. Which one is it? That's got to do with... Dave knows better. A very subtle balancing of the way different overlay districts are written. They were written at different times, and some of the details in the law are different because of that, different sections. Maybe you can give better room.
Again, David Robbins, 92 George Hill Road.
Okay. Get right up next to that microphone.
Without trying to get into too much gory detail, the zoning bylaw has provisions for granting waivers under a limited set of circumstances for a limited set of requirements. There is no general ability to grant waivers to all parts of the zoning bylaw. So what we've done here is, in light of our recent experience reviewing projects in village mixed-use districts, we've identified several specific situations where the ZBL does not currently give the board the power to grant a waiver, and it would be really helpful if it did. And so this is... Generally speaking, waivers are allowed for specific sections for specific reasons, and we don't have currently the ability to grant some of the waivers that are being proposed here.
Okay. Well, my understanding is that when you grant a waiver, say, under a special permit process, there's specific requirements that an applicant has to fulfill, and you could grant waivers on those specific requirements. This isn't saying waiver. This is saying a deviation from the requirements at the planning board's discretion. So there's no guidelines. This is completely up to them to change zoning or to change anything this applicant brings before them in that zone. So I don't think we want to have that responsibility solely rest on the planning board. We have town meeting, we make zoning laws, we make rules and regulations that come here. We vote on those. We accept them or we don't. This is giving them... It doesn't say waiver. It says deviation from the plans. So they have total discretion on what they're going to allow this developer to do. I don't think that's a wise decision for town meeting.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Could we ask Council for his input on this?
Town Council.
Chris Brown, Town Council. I mean, I think this is really a policy judgment for town meeting. You know, I think you can go either way. You know, you could make the amendment or not. It's not... There's nothing that's legally requiring you to have a deviation or waiver process, but there's nothing that would prevent you from doing it. So it's really up to town meeting what it wants to do.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. This article requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. I declare the motion defeated 77 to 97, having failed to receive the required two-thirds Article 39. Will the sponsor of Article 39 please come forward?
Madam Moderator, may I be recognized?
Mr. Fitzgerald.
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw as written in warrant Article 39, and further vote to authorize non-substantive changes to the lettering, numbering, and pagination of the zoning bylaw to be consistent with said bylaw.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. No discussion. Hearing none. This does require a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, please press one. All those opposed, please press two. And can one of my National Honor Society runners bring me that motion down from Mr. Fitzgerald? Thank you. I declare the motion carried by the required two-thirds majority, 131 to 35. Article 40 has been moved out of order as written by the moderator. Article 41.
I have a quick question of clarification, which is that on the bolded text, it says the Finance Committee opposes passage of Article 41. It also says 42 and 43. Or, sorry, just 42. But then, right after that, it says it has not voted to support or oppose it. So which is it? Does it oppose it? Does it not vote on it?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Marr.
During the hearings on this article, there were identified several issues with this article, including, not least of which, that Grafton Charter, Section 8, was repealed at the fall town meeting, and therefore, there is nothing to modify. There was a potential for amendments to be brought to this article on the floor of town meeting, so we decided to say that we would oppose the passage as written, but we would be open to further review if amendments were brought forward to make it a valid motion.
No affirmative action has yet been taken. Unless an affirmative motion is made, we shall proceed to the next article, and the record will show that no affirmative action was taken on Article 41. No affirmative action has yet been taken. Unless an affirmative motion is made, we shall proceed to the next article, and the record will show that no affirmative action was taken. Before we address the last article on the warrant, I want to take a moment to recognize the amazing, hard-working team of people who helped put this town meeting together: our select board, the Finance Committee for reviewing and making recommendations for every article, Grafton High School Auditorium for hosting, Cassie, Riley, and... Christian for giving up a night to come and run the microphones for us, GCTV for broadcasting with closed captioning and recording the event for your viewing pleasure on YouTube. Thank you, Bill and Bob. Our new Town Council, Chris Brown. Bob Berger for his tireless efforts to secure ASL sign language interpreters. And our interpreters, thank you very much for dealing with our less-than-robust abilities with the microphones. The Town Clerk's Office, Candy, Lavalley, and all of our election workers. Amy Marr for the bingo cards. Our Town Administrator's Office, Evan, William, Cindy, and Amber for always being able to accommodate all of my requests. And last but not least, the students from Grafton Middle School for taking the time to come and see our democracy in action. For those of you that made it to the end of the meeting, congratulations. Please return your remote controls when you leave. And lastly, I'd like to remind everyone that we have our local election coming up on Tuesday, May 21st. Polls are open, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Please make a plan to vote. Article 42. Will the sponsor of Article 42 please come forward? Forty... Forty-three, sorry. That was a typo. Article 43, please come forward.
I'm not sure if... Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, this article, I'm not sure if I'm the sponsor or speaking for the sponsor, but is for the town to adopt the streets, or specifically Elmerock Drive in Elmerock Estates, which was a 40B community, as a town way.
I'm going to call a brief recess. What was that?
Ninety-six, eighty-three.
Are we ninety-six or eighty-three?
Close, okay.
Close, very close. Oh, the spread is getting bigger, I heard from Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator.
Yes, sir.
If the proponent is not here for the acceptance of a road, which is normally done through the town, would put that motion forward. The proponent is not here, just like in regular or normal citizens' petitions, there is no motion.
Okay. So we can pass. I'll do the same that I did for the previous three.
No, anybody can make a motion.
Hold on. Mr. Trahan.
What's that?
Yeah. Yeah, we're in recess.
Okay.
Thank you all for your patience. We are back in session. Article 43.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Marr.
I move the town vote to approve passage of Article 43 as written in the warrant. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. I declare the motion carried 104 to 43.
Madam Moderator. I move to adjourn.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? By voice call? I declare the meeting dismissed. Please return your clickers. Good night and have a great summer.